Councillors, I'm about to formally open the meeting. Before we begin, can I remind everyone to switch their mobile phones off or onto silent? And councillors, please turn your microphones off. I will now request for live streaming to commence. Just for everyone in the audience, which is sorting out the technology. Good evening, councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton, I'm the Mayor of Durham City Council and the Chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's Planning Committee meeting and I declare this meeting open at 6:44pm and I do apologise about the delay, we just had some technical issues. This meeting is a scheduled hybrid meeting and so I also welcome councillors Greco and Messina and any members of the public who may be attending online. This meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I'll first acknowledge the Wondry Woywong people, the traditional owners of the land, and I pay my deep respects to elders past and present. I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. I would like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. Councillor Tim Lawrence, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Emily Dimitriades, councillor Getano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Lena Messina, councillor Susan Rennie and councillor Julie Williams. And our officers in attendance tonight are Vanessa Petrie, the General Manager, City Sustainability and Strategy, Chad Griffiths, the Manager, City Futures and City Development, Neil Cooney, the Assistant Manager, City Development, Matthew Cullen, the Coordinator of Statutory Planning, Anne Taylor, Principal Planner, Harry Grange, Senior Statutory Planner, Paul Moriarty, the Senior Statutory Planner, Anthony Smith, our Governance Advisor. Thank you and let's get underway. We have one apology tonight from councillor Trent McCarthy. I'll go to disclosures of conflicts of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest or interests to declare? No, okay, so we will go on to council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. I would like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note that councillors or any other person who addresses the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. I'll now go to the confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the Planning Committee from the 12th of February 2024? That's moved by councillor Williams and I have a second for the motion, councillor Hannan. I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour, that is councillor, sorry, that's carried unanimously. So I will go on to a statement. Councillors, I will be committing, I'll be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. If I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. Before we continue, can I please request that you ensure your microphones remain off unless you are speaking? So we will now go on to the consideration of reports. We have item 5.1, an application for planning permit D1142016A. This is for 61 High Street, Northkirk, and we'll go over to officers to present on this item.
Thank you Mayor, thank you councillors. This is a proposal to amend an existing planning permit issued in 2016 for demolition in buildings and works to an existing building and a car parking reduction. This amendment proposal seeks permission for a late night liquor licence and to extend the trading hours of the premises on Fridays and Saturdays only from 1am to 3am and increase maximum patrons from 80 to 145. The venue currently operates as a restaurant and bar and is open Monday to Sunday from 7am to 1am and Sunday from 10am to 11pm. The bar currently operates under a general liquor licence for which no planning permit is required and has a maximum capacity of 80 patrons. The subject site is zoned commercial zone, Schedule 1, and is affected by the heritage overlay and the development contributions plan overlay. Twenty-three objections against the application were received on the key grounds of amenity impacts to surrounding residential properties, including noise emissions, an assumption the premises will operate as a nightclub, potential for antisocial behaviour along the rear laneway, operation of the venue under previous management, financial impacts to surrounding businesses and increased traffic and car parking impacts. The proposal was referred to the Victorian Liquor Commission, who did not object, and to Victoria Police, who raised some amenity impact concerns. Victoria Police have subsequently withdrawn their objection to the proposal. The application was also referred to council's Equity and Wellbeing Unit, who have supported the application. The proposal complies with all relevant policies contained within the municipal planning framework, the purposes of the commercial one zone and the decision guidelines of clause 5227 of the Durham Planning Scheme, which pertains to licensed premises. No changes are proposed to the hours of operation of the rear courtyard, which shares an interface with the residential properties to the rear. The increased trading hours only relate to the areas inside the building. The venue is located in an established commercial precinct and with appropriate conditions of approval, potential amenity impacts to nearby residential areas can be managed. Conditions will include the provision and implementation of an acoustic report to ensure the venue operates within relevant EPA noise guidelines and the implementation of a patron management plan to manage patron behaviour. Patrons will also not be permitted to use the laneway for access to the venue at the rear of the site. A late night liquor licence, increased trading hours and increased patronage will contribute positively to the economic, social and cultural value along High Street. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and issue a notice of decision to grant amended planning permit, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillors, we have four submitters who wish to address the Planning Committee tonight in relation to item 5.1. Submitters, when I call your name, please approach the lectern to address the committee or if you are attending virtually, I will call your name and you may turn on your camera and microphone to speak. You will each have three minutes to speak. Do we have Matt Dillon, the applicant? Matt, please come up to the lectern, thanks, you have three minutes.
Thank you Mayor, good evening all councillors. Before I start my written submission, can I just confirm the fact that you all have received a number of documents and submissions and relevant plans, photographs that have been emailed to you recently? Okay, yeah, okay, thank you very much. To facilitate the allocated three-minute timeframe to present this verbal submission, I make the following key points for you all to consider in relation to this planning permit application. High Street, as you're all aware, has been voted the best street in the world, has been described as a thriving commercial, retail, hospitality and entertainment precinct, I'm sure you're all aware of that. Most importantly, this bar is contained and operates legally within the commercial one zone. The subject site legally trades as a licensed bar with a designated, sorry, within a designated commercial one zone with a number of ongoing high-density and other residential building developments, expanding throughout the High Street precinct. Developers are well aware of such zoning and in addition to residential use includes some commercial retail use on these newly developed land sites, it's common practice. The subject premises, like a number of other late night venues on High Street, will close at 3am. Most importantly, please ladies and gentlemen, it is not a nightclub, it is a functioning bar. There are no unrestricted music being played and no external music played. Music played is at acceptable noise levels, monitored and controlled at all times, including all internal and external patron behaviour. A number of other licensed venues in the vicinity of the new bar in question generate far more excessive noise levels. I highlight the Westgarth Theatre Bar and a number of other bars in the immediate area that generate excessive noise levels. On a number of occasions, I have personally witnessed such noise levels with the operations of these venues, both late at night and in the early hours of a morning. A number of other late night bars exist on High Street Thornbury in Northkirk, also trade to 3am in the morning. Unlike the subject bar, these other licensed premises, also located near sensitive residential land use, have live music, live bands, live performing music artists and ongoing dancing within these premises that can be easily heard externally. A number of noise attenuation measures highlighted in our written response have been successfully implemented with proven success. City of Durham Planning Department representatives were provided a demonstration of noise level generation onto High Street Northkirk from within the subject premises at a maximum decibel capacity level. Council have agreed that the generation of music, noise, was at an acceptable level in their view, this should be acknowledged by council this evening. Objections raised are assumption-based only, unwarranted and not factual in the circumstances. Subject to very poor operations and management of the subject bar by previous business proprietors, simply put, the current bar owners have unjustly inherited unwarranted and unjustifiable objections relating to amenity and noise in the circumstances. I conclude. The licensed bar has now operated for some 10 months, subject to proper management. No issues of concern have been identified or raised by the City of Durham, compliance, planning, local police or VCRR, or sorry, now it's VGCCC. Multiple visits have been undertaken by Victoria Police since the bar has opened with no concerns, this too must be acknowledged. Council has also been provided with a copy of written confirmation. I've got two points to raise.
You've got 20 more seconds.
Okay, that objections to this particular application have now been formally withdrawn, as Mr Gange has indicated on the 7th of April, this is now being treated as an untested application to VCGLR. We submit that council should therefore support this particular application for the general and justified reasons outlined.
Thank you Matt. We will now go on to Joseph Thomas, the applicant, would you like to speak?
Hi everyone, my name is Joseph Thomas, I'm one of the company directors of Bar 61. I've had the bar now for 10 months, during this time I've invested over thousands of dollars in acoustic measures that I have introduced to the bar from my residential and commercial experience. There's been multiple visits during that time from the police at this venue, there was no issues whatsoever. Also, Harry the Planner has attended site with me, we've completed the tour of the premises and also have had the volume of music at the maximum capacity and it was nowhere to be heard from outside the venue, which also Harry has confirmed. I've personally been up and down High Street multiple times after 1am and the excessive noise coming from other venues is far greater than our venue and problems obviously with their patrons. I have gone through the objections in detail and many of those objections are not applicable to us, they relate to the previous operations of the bar and previous owners. I confirm I have been operating this bar for 10 months now with no concerns and multiple visits from police identify as no issues at their premises. I hope you guys can consider the support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you Joseph, we'll go to Jacob Purcell. And Jacob, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you councillors and members of the community. My name's Jacob Purcell and my partner and I live in close proximity to Bar 61, sharing the laneway behind High Street with other residents and businesses. We have no issue to Bar 61 operating as a relaxed bar venue within the confines of their current permit. In instances where Bar 61 has a DJ or use the rear courtyard late at night, the excessive noise and disruption affects our quality of life in our home and that of our neighbours. We fear that an extension to the operating hours until 3am and an 80% increase in patronage with regular DJ events will significantly and detrimentally impact on our wellbeing. When Bar 61 hosts a DJ event, the volume of music and antisocial behaviour has caused significant discomfort and anxiety to us and our neighbours. All proposed measures to mitigate sound carrying through the venue will be ineffective every time a patron uses the side door to access bathrooms or the rear courtyard. And noise from within the venue carries out into the neighbourhood. Shouting and screaming of patrons using the outside corridor and courtyard well past 11pm has been a recurring issue. Even when all venue doors are closed, the heavy bass is disruptive and the installation of proposed sound barriers to the rear courtyard will be ineffective with the open roof and fences. Under previous ownership and their attempts to operate as a nightclub with a DJ, EPA noise testing of Bar 61 resulted in findings of aggravated noise of 94.3 dB measured on our property. An official warning was issued to Bar 61 management and while we acknowledge that current management cannot be held accountable for this, the intention of the permit to operate until 3am and the patronage this would attract would undoubtedly lead to similar excessive noise findings. Further to the noise issue, the antisocial behaviour which results from late night use of Bar 61 is a cause of serious concern. The laneway behind the bar is accessed by patrons for public urination, vomiting, drug use and littering. This is the same laneway we and other neighbours use to access the front doors of our homes. In our experience over the past two years, these behaviours correspond to when Bar 61 has a late night event. Over the past six months alone, we have experienced two separate incidents of people urinating on our front door late at night and captured on camera. Westgarth Village is a vibrant and inclusive community, however, the proposed operating model for Bar 61 does not fit. A petition signed by approximately 50 community members is evidence of the rigorous community opposition to this permit. The extension of operating hours to 3am and increase in patronage by 80% is contrary to the operating conditions of any other bar on this strip, you have to go a kilometre north to Francesca's to get another bar that opens till 3am. We urge you to consider the impact these changes would have on the residents and businesses in the area and reject the application, thank you.
Thank you very much Jacob, we'll go to Katie Munro, who I believe is online. Katie, would you like to turn on your camera? What I'm going to do is I'll go to questions, we'll see if we can get Katie to do her submission after that, but we'll see how it goes. So councillors, we may still have one submitted, Katie, but we will go to questions while we're sorting that out. So do we have any questions of the officers regarding this item? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, I just have one question, it isn't an objection that I've noticed being raised by the objectors so far, but just wanted to understand the situation with smoking at the rear area and at the laneway.
Thank you for the question councillor, can you perhaps expand on what you're interested in us providing?
Just understanding where the smokers are going to impact on the outdoor area and those sorts of things.
Thank you for your question councillor, through you Mayor. I guess the key aspect of this is that the existing conditions at the rear with that rear courtyard, they're not changing, it's still remaining open until 11pm on the Friday and Saturday, so it's still as is in terms of people frequenting that area, in terms of smoking and that sort of stuff, those activities would cease at 11pm. Does that, sorry, does that clarify?
Thank you, just a supplementary one, what I'm just trying to understand in practical terms is whether there's provision for smokers on the premises or if that's going to be another displacement, off-site impact.
Thank you councillor, through you Mayor, and the, there are options for on-street area for smoking as well, on the High Street, to the front of the site, that could accommodate smokers after the designated period in the rear courtyard.
That's, thank you, that's answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, I will just pause questions for a moment because I believe we do have Katie Munro now online. Katie, would you like to turn on your camera?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you, yes, we can hear you loud and clear Katie, so you've got three minutes to make your submission, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you and apologies for that technical difficulty. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today, I'm Katie Munro, residing just 80 metres away on Barry Street. I'd also like to confirm that we have no objections to the bar operating in its current capacity. James has helped paint a picture of a very real amenity impacts and I wish to focus more on consistency of this application planning policy. I disagree with council's conclusion that the proposed 80% increase in patrons and extended operating hours has broad policy support. Council's assessment lacks comprehensive analysis of the proposal's impact on our community and fails to consider the broader local context, including council policies relating to late night venues along High Street. For example, according to the applicant's own cumulative impact assessment, the only other late night liquor licences within one kilometre along High Street are within the Northkirk Activity Centre, up High Street, like they touched on just previously in this meeting. This makes sense, given local policies identify that areas up the top of the hill are within an area that is a recognised regional arts, entertainment and cultural node, which specifically seeks to encourage night time activities within its central core. Amenity impacts are also addressed through strategies within the Durham Planning Scheme for the Northkirk Activity Centre. For example, there's the use of creative corridors which run parallel to High Street. These corridors are distinguishable by their mixed-use zoning and non-residential uses which seek to provide a further separation between late night venues and residential areas. Comparatively, stated local policies for the Westgarth precinct are aimed at retaining and enhancing retail, restaurants and the cinema, not bars that operate into the early hours of the morning. Consistent with that objective, the precinct is surrounded by residential zoning on all sides and provides no buffer areas to absorb amenity impacts occurring from businesses. So I agree with the planning officer's assessment that it is reasonable for the adjacent residential areas to absorb some amenity impacts. I strongly disagree that it is reasonable that we be absorbing impacts between the hours of 1 and 3am, but this is not consistent with the policy objectives for Westgarth or its surrounds. Moreover, proposed measures to mitigate impacts such as a patron management plan and acoustic report overlook the fundamental mismatch between the proposal and its surrounds. So whilst building regulations might suggest a capacity of 145 persons is appropriate, it doesn't mean that an increase to 145 patrons is appropriate for the site context or afforded policy support. Finally, the application's repeated dismissal of potential impacts raises doubts about compliance with conditions and respects for due process or local residents. So while it has been argued that past indiscretion should not affect the application, I believe that these incidences only further support a conclusion that an intensification of the use through increased patronage and extended hours is not appropriate for Westgarth Village. So in conclusion, I urge council to reconsider its stance. Supporting the application in disregard of policy objectives exacerbate amenity impacts and undermine community welfare. Thank you.
Thank you Katie, thank you for being with us. So we'll go back to questions. Councillor Williams, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, to our officers, obviously there are many bars, not just in our municipality, other municipalities that are already operating until 1am. My question is that if this goes ahead and we seem to get, I guess, we're not satisfied with the outcome that's going forward, what are the chances or what powers do council have in cancelling those, the permit to go ahead to 3am?
Thank you councillor, through you Mayor. If there's non-compliances in the future, that can be raised with our planning compliance team to reach compliance with the operator. There are different mechanisms to reach that compliance, either through warning letters, infringement notices, bringing the matter to VCAT for an enforcement order and also to bring the matter to the magistrates court for a possible criminal offence. They're the planning enforcement proceedings that are within council's control. Outside of that, the liquor licensing authority has a separate enforcement mechanism that they would enforce and proactively enforce their liquor licence permit if one was issued for this site. Regarding cancelling a permit, it's a very, very rare instance that permits are cancelled, like planning permits are cancelled in Victoria, and it's a very high threshold to cancel a planning permit. For those reasons, that's why officers apply mitigation conditions to ensure there are avenues to achieve compliance where a permit has been issued.
Thank you. A follow-up question in reference to the laneway, an objector has made concerns regarding urination that's occurred on their veranda. I was just looking through the documentation, there doesn't seem to be access from the property to the laneway, they'd have to obviously walk around to get via the laneway, so it's not directly involving from this particular Bar 61, would I be correct?
Thank you for your question councillor, through you Mayor. Previously, the bar did operate with the fact that patrons were utilising that rear laneway to enter the bar from the rear, there's a rear service gate. So that's most likely the reason why there was some antisocial behaviour going on along that rear laneway. What we have suggested as a condition on this permit is to restrict the use of that rear laneway for patrons.
Thank you, did you have any further questions? Thank you, any further questions? Councillor Messina?
Thank you Mayor, I have several questions to the officers. My first question is what acoustic reports have been, studies have been undertaken for that particular venue in relation to DJ activity in the courtyard in the evening?
Thank you for your question councillor and through you Mayor. The music being played in the rear courtyard is amplified music, there is no DJing in that rear courtyard and that's not being proposed as part of this application. There is a DJ setup being proposed on the ground floor in the existing building. It has been made very clear by both the permit applicant and shown on the plans that there is to be no dance floor in front of that DJ. The plans clearly do show tables and seating throughout the venue. So on that basis, and I believe that the DJ will also be just connecting into the existing sound system, so they won't be playing through their own speakers or anything. So essentially the DJ music, from our understanding, is that it'll be background music for patrons largely sitting around and in the seating areas.
So what acoustic reports or studies have been done to ensure that the amplified music is not affecting too much local impact behind? And what local, what avenues do we have to perhaps put some restrictions that the DJ's not played outside externally?
Thanks for your follow-up question and through to you Mayor. We are, we're suggesting a condition for the provision of an acoustic report, which will need to be undertaken by a qualified acoustic engineer. That report will need to demonstrate that any noise levels within both the building and in that rear courtyard complies with EPA relevant regulations. And that report needs to be to the satisfaction of council, so we would need to review that report. And if it met, if we were satisfied essentially that the recommendations in that report did demonstrate that if the proposed measures that the acoustic engineer has recommended are to be implemented and can meet EPA regulations, then we would endorse that acoustic reports under the amended planning permit. So then they would, they would be, or they would need to comply with all those recommendations of that acoustic report.
I have a few supplementary, and if they don't comply, what is the action please?
Thank you councillor, through you Mayor. The actions are similar to the enforcement actions that I've outlined earlier, I can elaborate and repeat that if you're required.
That's okay, I just wanted to hear you say that, thank you.
Thank you councillor.
A few more supplementary questions. I know there was a notice of motion back in November, which I think was heard in February. Um, I know there was a notice of motion, um, back in November, which I think was heard in February about the eighty-six festival and council receiving a report to address live music venues and its surrounding amenity. How far away are we from that report, number one? Number two, how does that report and the findings impact planning applications such as this? And what risks can be undertaken to mitigate these moving forward?
Councillor Messina, the first question we will take on notice, but the second part will go to Chad for a response. Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, councillor Messina, could you, um, repeat the second part of that question?
I'm gonna remember which one I asked. Um, it was in relation to the report coming to council about live music venues. So once those recommendations come through in terms of what council can do to arrange stakeholders to discuss what can be done and what can't be done, because this is what the gap is, education. What, ha, if the report comes to council with some mitigating risks, if this is approved by council or rejected by council, how does that affect any, this particular application? If this was to be supported by council, moving forward subject to that report coming to council?
I'll go to Vanessa for this response. Thank you.
Thanks for your question, councillor Messina, and we will take on, um, notice when the report is coming. Councillor, my understanding is such a report, um, is a separate matter to the consideration of this planning permit which is being considered under the realms of the Darabin Planning Scheme. Um, my colleagues might like to add further.
Thank you. Uh, I would, I would simply add that, that once the report is received, um, I would imagine that that report addresses the fundamental nature of live music in the municipality and how to manage its external impacts until we see the, uh, and part of that consideration will include balancing the ne, um, the multiple desires of residents, businesses for a, again, to, to reinforce the nature of High Street and, and similar areas with local amenity. In terms of the, I, I, we can't provide a detailed response into how planning would respond to that, do we know those recommendations? But I would suggest that that forms part of that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions on this item? No. Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry, councillor Greco. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, um, chair. Look, I, I just had a question in relation to, and if I could get an explanation from our officers. Um, um, in terms of the extending the licence to three o'clock, um, in relation to the Liquor, Liquor Authority, um, to, um, enable that. Um, could you just, could one of the officers please explain the process of how that's done? And I, I believe that that needs to be done on an annual basis and what the implications for council is.
Thank you, councillor. Um, the planning permit, um, does not, eh, automatically allow liquor licence to be served, so the applicant does have to get a licence from the state government. And that licence is renewed on a yearly basis. Beyond that, there is a demerit points system that is applied by the commission whereby, um, if there are substantiated complaints on amenity that are registered against, um, a premises, there are suspensions that can be, um, applied by the state government licensing authority.
Thank you. Did you have further questions?
I didn't catch all of that. I'll paraphrase what I think I heard. Eh, and that is, is that, um, on an annual basis, um, there'll be an appraisal and, and that, um, the licence could be suspended, uh, dependent on whether there are, um, complaints either by council or other authorities or community members that then warrant for the licence to be suspended. Is that correct?
Thank you, councillor, through you, mayor. There is a yearly renewal period for licences. But the, um, allowance for suspension can happen anytime during the year. It's not just, um, at a one fixed period, um, in relation to a licence renewal. It relates to complaints and issues of amenity or other, um, aspects of, um, the Liquor Control Reform Act, such as the responsible serving of alcohol. Um, and those demerit points, um, do equate to different types of suspensions that can be applied to a venue operator, um, at different times of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, did you have further questions?
Yeah, just one other question, um, just in relation to, we heard tonight, um, that the police have withdrawn their objection, uh, for the licence to be extended to, um, three AM. Can, um, can you just outline, um, how that decision came about and, and what the weight of that would be in terms of, what weight does that give to the applicant in relation to get, getting the police to, um, actually support, uh, the extension to, from one to three o'clock? Can you just outline, could provide some context in relation to that? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, councillor, through you, mayor. Um, in terms of the Victoria Police originally having concerns, um, with the proposal, those concerns were primarily based off, uh, how the, uh, venue previously operated, um, under previous management in which there was a number of complaints, um, made to both council, the EPA and to the Victoria Police. Um, so through further investigation, um, and through discussions that the permit applicant has had with, um, the police, um, they've identified that it is now a new operator. Um, and so those concerns or a lot of the concerns that they had, um, were really sort of based off the assumptions of how the premises previously operated. Um, in terms of, of what weights, um, the comments from the police would have, obviously, um, we place a fairly high importance of, of their comments. Um, and so the fact that now they have, um, withdrawn their objection, um, is fairly significant in our opinion. Um, in the sense that, um, the safety, um, and amenity impacts, um, at least from the police have been, um, mitigated. So does that answer that question somewhat?
Yeah, thank you very much for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor Messina and then councillor Williams.
Thank you. So there's some supplementary questions. Is Monday to Thursday a one AM close of a bar consistent? That's my first question. With the municipality and bars in general.
Uh, thank you for the question, councillor, through you, mayor. Uh, a one AM finish under a general liquor licence is fairly standard across the municipality, yes.
And are we, and would that include a cease to live music being played at a particular time? Is that something that is possible on a planning permit?
Um, thank you for the supplementary question, councillor, through you, mayor. Just to clarify, there is no live music proposed as part of this application, where another venue has amplified music playing. Um, the close time would impact when the music is being played. So I guess it would cease at the close time, potentially before, but in this instance, there is no live music proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams.
Um, just to, for the objectors, I guess they would be quite concerned that previous, um, owners did take advantage of the premises there by using it as a nightclub without having or going through, um, permission in doing so. Um, as a resident, nearby resident, I'd be concerned that not only this bar, but any other bar that may take into their own hands of changing the way they feel that they can increase their income. Um, what does council do from our perspective and our offices in regulating and continually, I guess, being on target and ensuring that our, um, eh, eh, whether it's in reference to noise or, or, um, abusive behaviour, apart from police being involved, um, what is, what does council do? Like, we have street cleaning on a regular basis, we have, do we have a maintenance? Do we have some sort of, um, KPI? Do, does somebody go out there on a regular basis? Do these things get looked at, checked out? I just, just from the objectors so they understand and, and anybody watching online that they understand council's perspective on how we go about maintaining a, um, I guess, a cohesive, um, uh, working relationship, not only with our businesses but residents.
Thank you, councillor, through you, mayor. And there, there is the opportunity for proactive compliance to happen. And at this point in time, there is no system of proactive compliance that you, you speak of from a, as in officers going out late at night to, to check on these bars. What does happen is, is we rely on, um, when an issue is raised, that we then step in. So we devote our resources to where the issues are actually happening. Um, and then we can go out late at night, our officers can go out late at night and observe, eh, gather evidence, eh, educate and inform the operators, eh, remind them of the requirements under any planning permit or patron management plan. Um, so that is definitely an option that's available. So if issues are raised, we can go out and, eh, inspect and, eh, check in to see and ensure, um, compliance has been achieved.
Thank you. I will end questions there. We have had a briefing on this item previously. Councillors, now that there are no further questions, do I have a motion for this item? Councillor Hannan, are you moving the officer's recommendation?
Yes, please, mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second after that item? Councillor Reddy, councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to the item?
Um, no, don't stand right for these meetings. Um. So we don't have the, um, the recommendation there, but it's, it's, I'm, I'm speaking in support of the officer's recommendation. Um, we've heard that Northcote, High Street, Northcote is recently voted best street in the world and rightfully so. Um, that, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a wonderful street with really diverse opportunities, um, up and down the street. It, it, Westgarth Street, the Westgarth Village End is a bit different to up at the top of the hill. But, uh, I think, uh, that the proposed, uh, extension of hours will be a great addition to that section of the street, giving a late night option after the current restaurants and bars closed and it's well located with access to public transport. Just, just a reminder here, as we've heard, that the, the application is to extend operating hours for two nights only, Friday and Saturday, from one AM to three PM, and to increase the capacity of the, of the bar from eighty to a hundred and forty-five people. And just to re- reiterate, um, that the application is for a restaurant and bar, not a nightclub. No live music, no access to the rear cu- courtyard. Um, and that the opening hours are only for the internal spaces. Uh, we've heard there's been no concerns from Victoria Police. We've heard that there's new management since August twenty twenty-three with no complaints since then. Um, and I understand the applicant has worked, um, constructively with council to ensure that noise controls are effective. Um, I, I really do appreciate the concerns that objectors have made tonight, um, particularly in relation to antisocial behaviours and I, and, and for people living nearby. Um, I, you know, these, these decisions are not made lightly. Um, I, I have confidence in the fact that, um, as per the, the permit, the applicant will need to have a patron management plan endorsed by council to make sure that there are appropriate measures, uh, in relation to closing times, security, antisocial behaviour, et cetera. Um, and we've heard that, that the applicant does need to apply for a liquor licence every year and that they, excuse me, there are enforcement provisions by both council and, and the Liquor Licensing Authority. So taking all that into account, um, I, I think, as I said, there's a really, um, it's an opportunity for a really positive addition, um, to increase the vibrancy of the street. Um, uh, and, but also at the same time limiting, um, any, you know, negative impacts that may come with that. So, um, on that basis, I'd like to, uh, commend the officers for their work and, um, support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reddy, would you like to speak a second?
Um, mayor, in the interests of time, I'm happy to reserve, but I think councillor Messina had indicated interest in seconding too, so perhaps councillor Messina might like to speak.
Thank you. No, I'll reserve. Um, I, um, councillor Hannan did say some things I wanted to say, so I think that's,
Thank you.
That's the end of mine.
Councillor Reddy, did you want to add anything?
No, I was, no, okay. Uh, are there any further speakers to this item?
No, councillor Reddy, uh, got an opportunity to speak if you'd like to.
Um, very briefly, I think it's really important that we draw a line on, um, previous management and past practices and not hold the current owner responsible for, um, very poor practice in the past. And I, um, would like to say to owners of nearby premises who had to put up with that very poor behaviour in the past that I'm terribly sorry and that is awful, those amenity impacts that you've experienced. But, um, new owners should be judged on the way in which, uh, they manage the property and certainly on the rare occasions, because I'm not a, a late night bar person. But on the rare occasions that I've been to late night premises on High Street, it's been to sit around talking with people until the wee hours of the morning and drink lemon lime and bitters. So I think that, you know, we, we have a perception that, um, people at two or three in the morning are, are going to be loud and woke. And that's not always the case. And I think that is why it's important that we judge this planning application on its merits and have some confidence in the enforcement mechanisms that are available, um, should they be required. But at the same time, you know, I think it's a great shame that in our municipality, some of the venues that are open at three in the morning are pokies venues where truly only harm occurs. And so having late night venues which offer a different kind of service to community members is important and can be protective for some people. And, you know, I think we need to look at those positives because they can provide social spaces for people who don't, can't entertain at home as well. So, and jobs, lots of, lots of employment flows from, um, things like this. So on that basis, I, um, thank all of those who came and gave, um, their perspective tonight, but I will be voting in favour of the planning permit.
Thank you. That now closes the debate and I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour, that is councillor Hannan, councillor Reddy, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, councillor Neeson, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, all those against. And all those abstaining, councillor Dimitri Rides, that item is passed. And I declare the motion carried. So the planning committee has decided to support the application and issued a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions. The decision is not final and objector can appeal the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions at VCAT. The process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and to the applicant. Councillors, we'll now, we'll now go on to item five point two. This is a planning permit application D three three zero two zero two three. It's for a hundred and ninety-nine to two hundred and three Broadway Reservoir. And I'll go over to officers to present the committee with a brief presentation of the item. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councillors. This is a proposal for construction of a two-storey building and used as a childcare centre, including associated signage, onsite car parking and alteration of access to a road in a transport zone two at one ninety-nine, two O one and two O three Broadway Reservoir. The combined three lots provide an overall area, overall area of one thousand nine hundred and forty-five square metres. The subject site is Zone Residential Growth Zone Schedule Three and is affected by the Design and Development Overlay Schedule Eighteen and Development Contributions Plan Overlay. The proposal features a double-story childcare centre with ground floor, open play areas to the north, east and west of the building. Twenty-six onsite car parking spaces are provided to the rear of the building with access from Lindsay Street. The building provides a contemporary design. Site coverage is six hundred and twenty square metres, thirty-one point seven eight percent, with a maximum building height of nine point three two metres. Proposed hours of operation are seven AM to six PM, Monday to Friday. A maximum of twenty-five staff onsite at any one time. One hundred and twenty children places are to be provided. Six non-illuminated business identification signs are proposed. Nineteen objections against the application were received on the key grounds of acoustic impacts, traffic and parking impacts, operation of the centre, including hours of operation, impacts on existing residents with disabilities, loss of vegetation and native birds and property values. Notice the application was given to Melbourne Water as the site Notice the application was given to Melbourne Water as the site is subject to flooding from a Melbourne Water drain. Melbourne Water had no objection to the application subject to conditions. The proposal was referred to the Department of Transport as a site abuts a transport road zone two. The Department of Transport supported the application subject to conditions. The proposal presents a high level of compliance with state and local planning policy and appropriately responds to the purposes of the residential growth zone and suitably protects the residential amenity of the area. The development provides for a childcare education centre in an appropriate location that will serve the needs of the local community. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions.
Thank you. Councillors, we will now move to your submissions. We have seven submitters who wish to address the planning committee tonight in relation to item five point two. Submitters, when I call your name, please approach the lectern to address the committee, or if you are attending virtually, I will call your name and you may turn on your camera and microphone to speak, and you will each have three minutes to speak. David Lin, the applicant, would you like to speak?
Thank you, everybody. So just to start off, I'd like to say that, you know, we've worked very closely with the council to come to this proposal. We've met all the council objectives and planning requirements. At the same time, I acknowledge some of the objections that the local residents have raised, and I hear them. However, I did also mention to them that because we're budding a major roadway, some of the configurations in terms of access and egress is out of our direct control. We did explore the option of having access in the egress from Broadway. However, that was strongly objected to by our own experts and the council experts as well. So it was not really an option, given safety and traffic concerns there. We have had numerous experts that have spoken to some of the concerns that were raised in particular traffic. So we have had numerous experts look at the traffic and that was the best possible outcome. Also, at the same time, making note that all vehicle parking will be on grade and there will be no ramps, there will be good visibility for both entry and exit. And all entry and exit will be in a forward-facing motion. So that would reduce the risk of safety and concerns for some of the neighbours there. Operating hours are fairly consistent with a childcare centre being regular operating hours of seven to six. Being a childcare centre, the drop-off times are staggered for a lot of parents. It's not like a school where there is a strict drop-off time of, you know, eight forty-five, where there's a massive rush and run. It really is a staggered timeframe. Therefore, providing twenty-six on-grade car parks that are, you know, would be very self-sufficient for a centre of that size. And also, given the fact that we're removing three crossovers that are on Broadway, will increase the on-street car parking capacities along Broadway as well. In terms of acoustics, we have addressed this with council. It was a concern that was raised by the officers. And we have engaged acoustic engineers that have gone out there, taken readings and provided a host of recommendations which we have adopted. And we have passed on to council, and I believe the council officers have adopted as well. I mean, we are talking about a childcare centre that will hopefully address the needs of the area. And I do hope that Yep, and I do hope that the councillors can approve this on the basis.
Thank you, David. We'll go on to Cos Camassa. Thank you, and Cos, can I confirm, are you speaking on behalf of Maria and Carla as well?
No, I'm not.
Thank you, I'll go, you've got three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I wish to address council's assertion that the proposed non-residential centre is compatible with the residential area. I believe council has not considered the impact of ongoing noise, traffic and light disturbance. Council states on page fifty-six of the agenda, the car park will be well lit and is visible from the street and public areas. I raise an OHS concern here for nearby residents as to how this well-lit car park will impact their own residences, especially those living behind, across and next door. Lighting conditions imposed only concern the operation of the facility and do not address the impact the lights will have on the residents. Council recommends on page thirty-six point twelve that an automatic external lighting system capable of illuminating the pedestrian and vehicle vehicle entry to the building and all pedestrian walkways must be provided on the land to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. The external lighting must be designed, baffled and/or located to ensure that no loss of amenity is caused to adjoining and nearby land. I would like to understand how this will operate as to not impact nearby residents. Has council considered the impact on residents who are living in a residential general zone, not growth or commercial zone? Is it reasonable for people living within this zone to cope with the amount of noise and traffic generated by potentially one hundred and twenty children on a daily basis? Council states that play areas will be directed towards adjoining streets where possible. Again, Lindsay Street is the adjoining street, we're in the brunt of the impact of this facility. The original proposal said the noise levels will be one of a constant hum of a vacuum cleaner. Surely this cannot be reasonable in a residential area? As an example, would an office worker feel comfortable with a cleaner vacuuming all day while they tried to work? Council states that the crossover on Broadway will be removed to allow for additional parking. At a conservative guess, that will create at least three more car parks on Broadway. Hardly a dent in the issue. Perhaps council should consider additional parking in the middle aisle on Broadway. And unless one has X-ray vision, people using the centre are not going to know whether the car park is full and are going to drive constantly into Lindsay Street. This will cause traffic disruption, noise and affect the residents' right to enjoyment and use of their own property in a residential general zone. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll go to Maria Camassa, you have three minutes.
Good evening. In council's support of this proposal, it states that the application promotes walking, cycling and public transport whilst minimising car dependency. This is tenuous at best. On what basis can this assumption be made when no one can mandate or control how people will travel to and from the facility? Families with young children who require long daycare are unlikely to risk the safety of their children by walking or cycling to childcare whilst juggling backpacks and dressed in work attire. The centre will likely be used by working parents and caregivers, so the probability is they will drive to the centre, then on to work. Furthermore, there is nothing in the development which particularly dissuades car usage. For example, no proposed end-of-trip facilities per clause eighteen oh two two S of council's own strategic policy other than a bike rack. The facility proposes to house one hundred and twenty children and twenty-five staff whilst offering only twenty-six car parks. This means at any one time, one hundred and forty-five cars could be accessing the one driveway on Lindsay Street and when not finding a car spot, exiting and parking on either side of the residential street. This is not safe nor efficient and promotes traffic congestion all the way down Lindsay Street. Council states the traffic will be staggered. But the reality is there are clear peak usage times for a childcare facility, likely between six thirty am when staff commence to eight thirty am, and then four to six pm. The claim that it will be staggered also challenges the premise that East Reservoir needs long daycare. The proposal will negatively impact residents who live in a general residential zone, not growth nor commercial. It will create traffic congestion, which will result in noise and light disturbance, and in my opinion, is a health and safety risk both to residents and users. How are Lindsay Street residents meant to safely navigate their own driveways with cars potentially parked on either side of the street, car doors open, taking children from car seats and numerous young toddlers in the near vicinity? The applicants themselves have assessed a traffic impact on Lindsay Street and suggested a no parking restriction to the street, which council has overruled. I would like to understand on what basis that decision was made. Clause eighteen oh two four S of council's strategic policy requires sufficient protection of residential areas from the effects of road congestion. Council, I believe, is overlooking this responsibility and the surrounding road network, along with residents, will suffer. If council believes this facility is necessary, I urge it to consider changing the car park access to Broadway, diverting some impact from our residential streets. This will go a long way to easing some of the residents' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, I'll go to Carla Camassa, you have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening. Rule one point one point four of Darabban Council's Governance Rules twenty twenty stipulates that a meeting agenda must be published at least six days prior to a scheduled meeting. Council has not complied with this requirement, and accordingly, this meeting appears invalid. Council advised respondents of this impending meeting via letter on the twenty-sixth of March twenty twenty-four. This letter stated the agenda would be available after midday on Wednesday, April third, only five days prior to this meeting and in direct contradiction of rule one point one point four. On raising this concern with council via email on Thursday, April fourth, council conceded the letter was issued in error and that the date published was incorrect. Council's error infringes respondents' opportunity to prepare their submissions by limiting our access to the agenda. This is a breach of natural justice principles and accordingly, this meeting should be postponed to council's next available sitting to award respondents suitable time to prepare. Notwithstanding this, section sixty of the Planning and Environment Act mandates that council considers the requirements of the planning scheme in determining the application. Our childcare is not foreshadowed under the Uses Under Clause thirty-two point oh seven Schedule Three of the Darabban Planning Schedule. Accordingly, council must carefully consider the application on the merits. And on the merits, the proposed development does not respond to the purposes of the zone. The proposed childcare does not serve community needs. At present, there are twenty-three childcare providers in Reservoir with vacancies. Of these, six are in East Reservoir and provide long daycare facilities. This includes a brand-new facility due to open shortly on the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-four, and it is only one point six kilometres away from the proposed development site. Council's Families, Youth and Children Services Department has clearly erred when it asserts there is a need for additional childcare in the Reservoir East area. The assertion that the development is within the Reservoir Activity Centre also appears to be an error. The Victorian Department of Transport and Planning has identified ten activity centres across the state and no Reservoir Activity Centre exists. Lindsay Street in particular is in a general residential zone and a childcare centre does not respect the neighbourhood character of the area. To address some points raised by the applicant briefly, the car parking situation is inadequate. It provides twenty-six car parking spots where the facility will be staffed by twenty-five staff. One car park is dedicated as a disabled spot. This is clearly insufficient parking when you do simple math. The readings for the acoustic report were not taken at peak times. They were taken at nine am on a Tuesday after the typical work traffic had come and gone. This is also not when pickup and drop-off times will be taken.
Carla, would you like to wrap up? Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I'll say.
Thank you, we'll go on to, oh, and I'll just correct a part of that. So my understanding is that there was a, something put out wrong in the letter, but the agenda was published online on time, so we'll go on to
With all due respect, councillor, how were we supposed to know that if we were advised that it was going to be made available on the Wednesday?
So I think the advice that I've received is that while the letter was wrong, the agenda was published at the right time, but you have had your three minutes, thank you, Carla.
That's disappointing.
To remove, to return to your seat, thank you. And I'll go to Robin Ellis for your three minutes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you. Look, I'm going to talk as a resident, I've been thirty years living in Lindsay Street, and just talk about how this will affect me. And I know I'm not against development, but it's mainly about the positioning of the entry and exit. Until two years ago, I was a driver. And as you come, to me, Broadway is a much better place to have the entry and exit because it's a one-way on our side of the street. You only have people accessing it, turning left, and when they come out, they will be turning left again into Broadway. They then either go forward or they turn left into Lindsay and go down towards the south. So you're going to have a lot less traffic. Whereas if you have it on Lindsay Street, you've got people coming from Howard Street, it's a two-way street, it's a narrower street, whereas Broadway was initially a two-lane road. It's now one lane with a bicycle track and then parking. Whereas Lindsay Street is just a suburban street. You have people coming two ways, people will then have to turn right into the childcare centre. And you'll have people coming around the corner, and it's a blind corner coming from Broadway, especially with the new fencing that they will be putting up. And you, people, you just can't stop. I live two doors up from the corner. And when I come and try and turn right into my car, my house, and have for many years, you come left out of Broadway, you put your blinker on to turn right and you'll have somebody right up your backside. You know, there's rear-end collisions are, you know, you have to avoid them. It's a real problem in that area. We get, especially between four and six pm, that's when people get very frustrated because Broadway banks up to avoid that High Street-Broadway intersection. They come and they turn left into Lindsay Street. They come around that corner very quickly because they're generally very frustrated. And if they have somebody who, within two or three cars' length, has to turn left into a childcare centre or people are coming out of it, I'm really concerned that it's going to be extremely dangerous having that entry-exit there. If you put it on Broadway, as I said, there's three houses before it that you'll have clear view of when people would be able to turning left and clear access when people are coming out. And you have that time in weekdays when it's just a nightmare with traffic there. It has been for many years. Being disabled, it's going to affect, I have everything delivered. The delivery vans need a certain amount of room. For me, going over to my neighbours over the road, the extra traffic's going to be a problem. My main problem is that that entry and exit, apart from parking in the street, which will be a problem because, as was pointed out, there's not going to be enough parking for them as well. And there is another, a lot of other concerns, but I'm very nervous and that's all I can fit in. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, thank you, you don't need to be nervous, it's all, you spoke very well. I'll go on to Lynette Curless, and you have three minutes to speak.
Evening, councillors, excuse me. I'd like to address the odd of traffic and parking for the proposed development. Traffic racing down Lindsay Street is a big problem, already a big problem. When congestion on Broadway gets bad, the drivers turn left into Lindsay Street and just plant their foot and roar down, especially in the mornings around seven till nine, but more so in the afternoons between three and six thirty. I feel that having both the entrance and the exit in Lindsay Street is an accident waiting to happen. They're both the same, in and out, the same thing. People drive four-wheel drives these days, big cars, there's going to be an accident, really. If somehow the entrance could be on Broadway, and there's already two of those houses that are on Broadway have got driveways, so one of them could be used as an entrance. They can come around the back of the complex and exit onto Lindsay Street, whether they have a no right-hand turn and the cars have to go down Lindsay Street down to Howard, that could be an option. Also, where are the staff going to park? I know everyone else has said the same, we're all concerned. I've lived there for twenty-five years and I haven't really had a problem. But if people are parked each side of the street and a car's coming down, you want to come up, you've got to stop and give way because you cannot get two cars down. You can barely get one car down with this parking either side. The council should, the car parking for the staff, I think that's going to be a problem. There won't be enough onsite parking, which will cause parking problems on the streets and more congestion. I think the council should look into these problems before there's a major accident or even worse, a fatality. I think the council should look into these problems before there's a major accident or even worse, a fatality. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. I'll go to Penny Jacky-Lo. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address the council tonight. We, the community of Lindsay Street, have come together to urge the council to reject the officer's recommendation and approve the permit application for the childcare centre. We believe the reasons provided by the officer are unfounded. One of the key considerations raised by the responsible officer was the provision of safe and efficient onsite parking with appropriate access to the site. However, this seems to be contradictory to the proposal that the traffic generated by the centre will be accommodated within the surrounding road network. I'd like to focus on the repositioning of the entry-exit to Broadway, which we believe is a more efficient and logical solution for the community parents, council responsibility and owners of the centre, and foremost, safety for everyone, which this does not apply to. Lindsay Street, which is already on a blind corner, is currently used as a shortcut by speeding commuters between eight AM and nine thirty AM and between two thirty and six PM, which consides with, consides with prime pickup times for most childcare centres. And I'm not sure whether the USB that I did drop off earlier last year is available on hand because I have had many cups of tea documenting speeding appallingly speeders down the street who would collect anyone. I have stood in our driveway and taken countless videos of cars taking the Lindsay Street corner at speed a mere ten metres from where the entry and exit to the centre has been proposed. I believe the relocating the entry and exit to Broadway would increase pedestrian traffic safety in Lindsay Street and Broadway and with appropriate signage or traffic lights, improve the traffic law on Broadway regarding the promotion of cycling, walking and public transport. It is simply not feasible for many parents who work outside hours of the home to deliver their children to daycare at a reasonable hour and get back to home in time for work or to work furthermore. The office's assumption that these modes of transport will be widely used seems highly speculative. Then there has been no evidence provided to community consultation regarding the viability of these modes of transport. If the proposal is approved, we request an upgrade of the surrounding footpath, more substantial signage at intersections dedicated bike lanes on High Street and Broadway, importantly, additional traffic lights and increased public transport options. In conclusion, while we welcome the childcare centre, it should not come at the expense of current residents' safety and convenience. We urge the council to consider these points and reject the officer's recommendation. And I will say very briefly that as a house that resides next to the three developing properties that are about to be demolished and have a childcare centre, we have a small family, one child who has extremely high needs, who is at severe high risk. It impacts her and us greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Penny, for your submission. And councillors, do we have any questions of officers regarding this item? Councillor Messina.
Thank you. I have several questions. Just in relation to the early childhood centre facade. From looking at it, it appears that the developer is maximising the branding of the childcare learning logo and the branding of the facility. Is there any reason why the entry point was not Broadway and has that been discussed with the developer? That's my first question.
Thank you, councillor. Through you, Mayor. The advertising is consistent with childcare centres and there is a condition requiring the removal of the advertising to the rear of the property, which interfaces with a residential property. Regarding the access to Broadway, it is a transport zone under the control of the state government and the policy guidance is to limit or reduce the frequency and access points along such roadways and to divert to the side streets. In this instance, the obligation provides one crossover at the side street, which has been designed in accordance with engineering and planning scheme requirements. Thank you.
Councillor Messina.
Thank you. I have two more supplementary questions through you, Mayor. My first question is, I hear speed is an issue in Lindsay Street. It can, a condition of the application, should it be successful, be that the developer install or pay for the installation of speed humps along Lindsay Street. That's my next question and I have one after that.
I'll go to Vanessa Petrie for this.
Thank you for your question, Councillor Messina and through you, Mayor Newton. Councillor, that's quite a complex question and I would need more notice to be able to provide you with a response to that.
I will also remind the audience that we have had briefings on this item. Are there any further questions? Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton and Chair of this planning meeting. Could I just direct a question through you to the officers? Just what would be the statutory impacts of council deferring this matter to another meeting?
Thank you for the question, councillor. Through you, Mayor. In terms of statutory processes on foot, if we don't make a decision here tonight, we're at risk of a failure appeal being lodged against the planning application. The application is beyond the time limit that we have as officers to make a decision within time. So there is the ability for a failure appeal to be lodged by the permit applicant to take the matter to VCAT.
Councillor Messina.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I wasn't at the briefing earlier. I was at a work, as a work issue that I had to attend to. Just in relation to parking permits, is it, given that there's only twenty five parking spaces and there'll be significant a number of employees that will be at that particular facility, can you tell or share with the, with the objectors what the process is in relation to arranging limited parking for people that perhaps will be employees of the early childcare centre, please?
Thank you for the question, councillor. Through you, Mayor. We've assessed the application against the required statutory rate of car parking, which is fully provided on site. As we would understand from the operation of a childcare centre, there is drop-off and pick-up times and the car parking spaces required in this instance don't relate to the staff. The measure is the, is the number of children. So the fully compliant rate relates to the number of children. We aren't imposing additional requirements for car parking simply because we can't. There is no requirement for us under the planning scheme to do that. In saying that, with the drop-off and pick-up times that we know will operate, those car parking spaces would be freed up throughout the day. There's also a matter, I suppose, of workers at the childcare centre and the childcare centre more broadly managing use of those spaces throughout the day. So I hope that goes some way to answering your question.
Thank you, Councillor Greco.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to get some clarification from our officers in relation to Vic Road's requirement about not using Broadway as the ingress and exit to the proposed child, early childhood centre. Can I just get some real clarity about, is that an absolute requirement of Vic Road's or is there room for discussion, negotiation or whatever?
Thank you for the question, councillor. Through you, Mayor. I wouldn't say it's an absolute requirement, but it's a fairly widely-held principle applied for planning applications across the state, that access not be off the more well-trafficked thoroughfare, if you like. In this instance, the application's been referred to council's transport experts, to the Department of Transport and Vic Roads, with the submitted traffic report from the applicant's experts as well. And the access off the side street has been supported unanimously as the ideal location for access and ingress.
So just a supplementary question to that. So, so from what I've understood from there, because it wasn't clear for sound reasons, that it's not absolute. It could be argued or a case can be put to have the access along, along Broadway. And so the supplementary question would be, if that was, if that was the case, would that alter very much the proposal as it stands now in terms of the footprint and layout, et cetera?
Thank you for the supplementary question, through you, Mayor. Any rearrangement of the vehicle access and car parking arrangements would have a flow-on impact to the layout of the development. To clarify, while it's not absolute, Vic Roads are the determining authority for that question. So council can't recommend for that access to be on, taken from another point. Vic Roads have made the assessment in this case as the determining referral authority and that's the point of access that they have supported.
Just a final supplementary question. Then therefore, does that mean that council could not place a condition that the access has to be from Broadway? Is that what we're saying here?
Thank you for the supplementary question. Through you, Mayor, yes, that's correct. We could not impose a condition, a condition of approval requiring that. We have to adopt the Vic Roads position in this instance.
Thank you, Councillor Williams.
There's obviously a couple of main factors here. One is in reference to the entry and exiting. I don't know if there is another way forward in, for the applicant and maybe council officers coming together and seeing if there's another way to rejig this. My other main concern is obviously particularly the tenant that has the child with high needs. I've been in a very, very similar situation where I did take the applicant to VCAT and I do have a child with special needs and I won that application. And then they came back and they-
Do you have a question?
My question is that, that there is a way and there is a will and I'm sure that they can come together with the applicant and, and the tenant particularly who will be impacted the most in reference to the situation of their child.
Councillor Williams.
Is there a possibility?
Are you asking a question?
Is there a possibility that our officers can meet with the applicant and to ensure that there is protection to particularly the one that has, that needs some sort of soundproof or protection for their child with special needs? But also is there another way forward in redesigning that we have a better outcome than what we have at this point in time? If not, then I will be refusing or asking our officers to put in a refusal objection to this item.
Thank you, councillor. The application is now ready for decision. We've gone through the process of raising issues and design matters with the applicant. It's gone through its referral requirements with Vic Roads and the Department of Transport. The, there is no clear mechanism for council to resolve tonight for the applicant to engage in further design. And it is open, if we don't make a decision, for the applicant to appeal at VCAT for a failure to make a decision on the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Councillor Messina.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, and thank you to the officers. My question is, we've had an item come to planning committee previously where, and I remember it was an amendment put forth by councillor Rennie, which was, I thought, was magical on the night. Is there any way we can defer for thirty days where the developer and the residents can address? Number one, can the developer put in speed humps and that addresses the speed of the street? Number two, can the developer arrange perhaps a different entry and exit point? Can we make an amendment tonight where we can defer this for thirty days? Is that allowed?
I think, shall we maybe answer the question about deferral? I think the other things are, they're separate.
Is there a possibility of having adjournment for a few moments that we can have a discussion, if that's okay, for our officers?
Let me check.
Mayor, if I may, the officers just circulated an email for my-
Councillor Messina, I haven't asked for you to speak. Sure. Just for the audience, so what usually happens is that if someone wants to refuse a planning application, they usually ask for that to be drafted before a meeting. That didn't happen tonight. We will take a few minutes adjournment. We'll take five minutes so officers can deal with some very last-minute requests. So we're back at eight thirteen. So we're back at eight thirteen. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we will resume the meeting at eight eighteen PM. Sorry about the delay. Um, do I have a mover for this item? Councillor Rennie?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, which is that we approve the planning permit with conditions.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that item? Councillor Hanan, councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the item?
Um, thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all of the many residents who have come along tonight to speak about, uh, the impact the planning application may have on them. And what I take from your passionate, um, speeches is that we as council need to do a whole lot more to actually improve traffic safety and speeding impacts that exist already in Lindsay Street. I've heard that people use it as a cut-through, that people speed down the street, and these are things that it is our role as council to address. And regardless of whether there's a childcare centre on the corner, um, we need to be thinking about these things and addressing them and taking these amenity considerations very seriously. But having said that, tonight our role is to assess a planning application, and it is a compliant planning application, and it will provide a really welcome service to families in our community who will benefit from having local childcare. They may, uh, be families that live locally, there may be workers who work in the nearby shopping centre, and, um, it would not be built if there was not a demand. Thinking about the location of childcare centres, um, and in fact schools, and the role and place of children in our society, um, this is an appropriate location for a childcare centre. And if we think about the childcare centres that are actually owned by Darabben Council in terms of the venues, many of them are in very quiet residential streets in areas actually much quieter than this, like Rally Street and Clifton Street and Kennelworth Street, which is quite close, um, to this location. And we very rarely hear from residents of those streets complaining about the noise impacts of toddlers playing in their courtyards. This is an activity that takes place during weekdays, not on weekends. And so in many ways, I think lots of people find that a childcare centre is an excellent neighbour. And if you're a family that lives in the street and uses the childcare centre in your own street, then not only is it an excellent neighbour, but it provides a very local service. And that's one of the things that we love about childcare is that they are smaller than schools and usually families don't have to travel very far. Um, this childcare centre, um, will comply with all of the regulations. It has a lot more car parking than many childcare centres, um, have. My own kids went to Rally Street where there was no car parking provided whatsoever. And the applicant has worked with our staff to put together, uh, an application for a facility, um, which, you know, is compliant with all of the planning rules. And it's our job as councillors to make decisions based on the planning rules and to look at areas. The proposed refusal amendment is one of the weakest I've ever seen. Opposing a planning application because we don't want children near us? I mean, children are part of our community. They deserve places to be, whether that's parks or schools or childcare centres, playgroups. Um, we want kids, we want places that are good for kids. And so I really urge my colleagues to support this planning application. Don't kick the problem down the road to VCAT where we all know it will be approved. That would just add time and expense to council, to the applicant. Um, it'll require enormous investment and stress and anxiety for everyone who gets involved only to get the same outcome six months later. Notwithstanding the opposition that we've heard tonight, and we've all heard that, I think we need to be brave and we need to do what our role is, which is approve the planning application.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Hanan, would you like to speak to the item?
Can I reserve my right, may I?
Yes, you may. Are there any further speakers to the item? Councillor Williams?
Um, I'll be speaking in opposition to this as, um, you may think that ticking a box because it fits in with your planning application does not fit in with what impacts it has on people's livelihood or emotionally, um, especially when you have a child with special needs. Now, I think there hasn't even been consideration. It sounds like the applicant has met with council, and I don't think that the applicant or council has met with the residents in this situation. And I think that's, that's where the missing and the gap is. And I'd like to ensure or try to see a way forward that that is done. Um, because I don't think that we're going to have a great outcome if we pursue going forward by accepting this application as is.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers to the item? Councillor Messina?
Um, excuse me, Mayor. I don't know if I'm the only one, but I didn't even know that the meeting had started. We had no sound here, virtually.
Can you hear me?
Same with me. Um, I, I haven't heard any of the, the debate, so I don't know where the meeting's at, at the moment, so.
Okay. Councillor Messina and Greco, can you hear me speaking?
I can now, we can, I can now, yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so we are on the officer's recommendation. Uh, we've had the mover councillor Rennie, we've had the, who's spoken? We've had the councillor Hanan as the second has not spoken, he's preserved his right. We've had councillor Williams speak in opposition, um, and we're now moving to if there are any other speakers to this item. Councillor Messina?
I'll be speaking in opposition. I was hoping for a deferment. Um, I think, um, count, planning meetings are an opportunity to hear from objectors and from developers. And sometimes, and now, planning is such a cotton ball thing where we can't speak to developers, we can't speak to objectors. We're conditioned in terms of eye-back about who we reply to when it comes to planning issues. And, um, planning committee meetings is an opportunity to hear from the developer and hear from the objector. I'm sorry that, um, these issues of speed, I'm sorry that these issues of entry and exit point have not been, um, looked at more widely. So in, in relation to that, I'll be, um, hoping that there is a deferment or, or I'll be, I'll be supporting a refusal for this particular permit. We need to address speed, we need to address the entry and the exit point. And I feel that there hasn't been an opportunity to tease that out. Now, whether there was the developer saying no, or there's been no collaboration between the residents and the developer, I'm not aware of, because again, we're not allowed to make those calls. Um, but in, in relation to that, where there's best practices, there's rules and there are regulations, but there's also best, best practices. And I think best practices on this occasion has not been carried out. So I want to thank everybody who's spoken tonight, by the way, too.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Are there any further speakers, councillor Greco?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, look, I, I'm going to use the, the little time that I have is to foreshadow a, a deferment motion, as has been suggested by a couple of the councillors. I, I think we need to, um, defer this, this item. I think there's an opportunity for a dialogue, uh, between the developer and the, the residents together with, um, our officers. And also, as in, in the, in my questioning, um, also with a dialogue with, um, Vic Roads in terms of exploring and mooring depth about the, um, access points of the, of, of the development. I, I, I think in terms of early childhood centres, I've been a big advocate of them. I think, um, our statistics and data shows that they, that they will be much needed and into the future, and, and, and I welcome, um, this, um, uh, approach or proposal in that sense. But I think we could fix up some of the, um, outstanding points, put a bit more attention to them. We've done this in the past in a very similar case, I think councillor Williams mentioned that, where there was one particular resident with a child that had particular issues. And we deferred the case to try and see whether we could come up with, um, a more, uh, a, a, a better solution. And, and we did that, and the, the objector and the developer were quite happy about, um, doing that. And, and it gave them an opportunity to explore other, uh, uh, other outcomes. So in summary, um, I would ask councillors to, um, for, for procedural reasons to reject what's before you. And then we would, I would put a deferment motion so that this thing could be further looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Were there any further speakers to the item? Councillor Hanan, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to start by, uh, reminding or just making the point that childcare is essential in, in its own right as, as part of, uh, children's development. Um, and also importantly to enable parents to participate in the workplace and other activities. Um, and, um, uh, we've heard in this chamber before, uh, arguments that, that there are childcare reservoir, uh, childcare deserts around Australia and within Darabben, including Reservoir. Um, and I'd encourage people to have a look at the, uh, research by, uh, Vic Uni, um, which shows in, in that, in the, in that area, currently around zero point two childcare spaces available for every child of childcare age. Uh, Darabben Council, along with state government, is doing its bit to try to address that. Um, but we need more childcare centres in this area. Um, I, I also, along with councillor Rennie, really, um, appreciate the objections and concerns that have been raised. Um, but I, I think we need to look at this, um, just go through it logically, um, and, and just rationally. We, we've just been told, we've just been told that an entry and exit on, um, Broadway is just, is, is highly unlikely, it's really not an option. Um, Vic Roads will make a decision on that. Deferral is not a great option either, um, where this is already overdue. Uh, and could just go to VCAT. Uh, although if it, if it, if there is a deferral, I'd encourage all parties to negotiate in good faith. Um, a refusal, as is, I would say, unlikely to succeed. And we'll get a worse outcome. We've got none of the conditions, including the noise conditions, the traffic management, the other conditions that have been added, will not be, um, held to the decision if, if, if we give a refusal. Um, I think the issues about traffic can be managed separately. And on the basis of the application itself, I think we need to, uh, pass this and, uh, support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanan. As the chairperson, I do have the opportunity, oh, sorry, um, councillor DeWitt, did you want to speak?
Um, no, I just wanted to ask if we could raise a procedural motion for a deferral?
I don't think so. Um, let me check governance. Thank you, councillor DeWitt. I've just checked, um, and we can't do a deferral motion because debate has commenced on the item of business. So I will just now close the debate, uh, which as chairperson I do have the right to speak to. Um, I am very much in support of this application. Um, we are very fortunate in Darabben that we recently had a report that we are overall, private and public, performing better than the national quality standard average across Australia. So Darabben is really doing incredibly well for childcare. We did not have enough places. So I've got an eighteen-month-old, um, I was on the council waiting list, um, I think had pretty much no chance of getting a council place. He goes to a wonderful private centre in Preston. Um, I do ride my electric bike there every day. Um, I do go in business attire before I come to town hall. Um, and I understand that there are traffic issues in Broadway. I understand there's traffic issues, um, around the roundabout particularly. Um, but I don't think that's a reason to say no to this application. I think that we have here an application that will allow, um, many, many more children and their parents to have access to childcare and have access to, um, women and others to go back to work. Um, and I think private and public childcare is very much a part of Darabben childcare services, and I'm very much in support of this motion.
That now closes the debate. Councillors, I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? It's Counsel Rennie, Counsel Hannon, Counsel Lawrence, Counsel Nusen, all those against. Counsel Williams, Counsel Messina, Counsel Greco, all those abstaining. That is Counsel DeWitt. It's four-four, so I'll use my casting vote to pass the application. Thank you. The Planning Committee has decided to support the application and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions. This decision is not final, an objector can appeal the decision, and the applicant can appeal any conditions at VCAT. The process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and applicant. We'll now go on to item 5.3 at 26 Jenkin Street, Northkirk. Before we commence, I'd like to acknowledge that there was a technical issue within Appendix C of the agenda, and the images were not displaying correctly in the published agenda. I note that objectors receiving the complete plans on 28th of February 2024 and a corrected version of Appendix C of this item is currently available on our website alongside the agenda. Officers will present to the committee a brief presentation of the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. This item concerns a planning application previously refused by council that is currently before VCAT for a decision and seeks to support an amended version of the proposal of the upcoming VCAT hearing, subject to conditions. The application is for construction of two dwellings on the site, both dwellings to have four bedrooms. The development proposes a side-by-side format, each with a basement car park for three cars and generous El Fresco area with pool at the rear. The original application received 17 objections. The matter was previously considered by council at its August 2023 Planning Committee and refused on the grounds that the proposal represented an inadequate response to the preferred neighbourhood character, particularly setback of the upper levels and the resultant visual bulk, unacceptable overshadowing impacts on neighbouring solar panels. Following refusal by the Planning Committee, the permanent applicant lodged an appeal against council's decision with VCAT. The permanent applicant formally amended the proposed plans in response to council's grounds of refusal. The revised plans continue to seek permission for two double-storey dwellings with basements, but now offer an improved response to neighbourhood character through an increased upper level setback, reducing the bulk of the proposal and dominance of the street, improved materials and architectural forms. It also proposes increased landscaping, including canopy trees. The amended proposal was considered at a VCAT compulsory conference on the 5th of February 2024 with no agreement reached between parties. Consequently, the matter is scheduled for a VCAT hearing for next week, commencing on the 15th and continuing on to the 16th of April. Given the improvements in the design, it has proposed that council's position now be revised to one of support for the amended proposal at the VCAT hearing, subject to conditions. Should council resolve not to support the recommendation within tonight's report, council's VCAT advocate will continue to argue against the grant of a permit in line with the decision of council at its August 2023 meeting.
Thank you. We will now move to your submissions. Councillors, we have six submitters who wish to address the Planning Committee tonight in relation to item 5.3. Submitters, when I call your name, please approach the lectern to address the committee. Or if you're attending virtually, I'll call your name and you may turn on your camera and microphone to speak, and you'll have three minutes each to speak. The first submitter is Neil Morehouse. Thank you, Neil.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor and guests. I'm Neil Morehouse and represent myself and Narida Morehouse of 28 Jenkin Street, Northkirk, owners for 33 years. The grounds for refusal from August 2023's unanimous decision at the planning meeting have not been addressed or overcome in the amended plans. The original refusal grounds were, in short, neighbourhood character, the visual bulk and size of the proposal, and the overshadowing of solar panels. Nothing in the amended plans addresses the issue of neighbourhood character. The amended plans remain completely out of character with the streetscape. The changes to the amended plans are minimal or marginal at best, and there is no reason to change your votes. This is a reason to refuse the amended plans. In the amended plans, the view from our backyard is virtually unchanged and will still bring an enormous sense of overwhelm by the development. This is contrary to the existing and preferred character of the area. Excuse me. The overall length of the amended upper story of Building Two on our side is 29 metres long, only 1.58 metres less than the original plans. The dwelling on our side has the least change overall for the proposal since the original planning meeting. What also remains a concern is the bedroom that has been removed in Building One in the amended plans. The rear upper story on the eastern side has not changed externally at all. The external size, bulk and footprint of this section of the building remains unchanged from the original plans. It is an internal change of layout only. The building works are so extensive, the two significant trees on the development boundary for Building Two will be at risk. In our opinion, there's a very good chance of the resulting death of these two significant trees. We also have serious concerns regarding the signs installed by the developer aimed at undermining the sale process of our home. They were installed two days after our auction board was put up and remained in place for seven and a half weeks. We urge you again, as the custodians of this unique streetscape, to save the amenity of our street, our backyards and our solar panel capacity. We call on you to deny this amended development application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Neil. We'll go to Raylene Jones. Thank you. We'll go to Janet May Howden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for once again having us at the Planning Committee meeting. In short, I would like to confirm my previous stance that the development disrespects the character of the Jenkin Street neighbourhood. As an A2 precinct and designated minimal change area, there is an obligation for developments to be consistent with the type, scale, style and prevailing character of the area. The changes made in the applicant's amended plans are insignificant and don't address the major issues. The total floor space has changed by the smallest of margins. The upper floors at the street front now sit barely within the ground floor footprint. The addition of vertical expressed cladding, hope I've got this right, of black anodised bronze again does little to be in tune with the Edwardian and the Victorian architecture of the street. The proposed development is still massive, bulky and overwhelming. It still has limited green space. It still doesn't respect the predominantly Edwardian and Victorian houses. It still does not fit the area. I would also like to clarify something if I could, as it has been an issue that we have all consistently come up against over the past months. It is the concept of the emerging preferred or desired character of the area. There has been mention of upcoming changes for Darabin and the review and replacement of the existing precincts and things such as the minimal change areas. The argument has been put forward by a number of parties that this development is consistent with the emerging preferred character of the area. We can't dispute this because we don't know what that is. How do we know or find out about this preferred character? How can it be said that this development meets the new desired plan when it isn't yet fully defined or officially in place yet? It seems unfair for this notion of upcoming change to be used as a major argument under the circumstances. The existing requirements should prevail. Thank you, councillors. I appreciate your time once again.
Thank you very much, Janet. We'll go to Simon Power. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Simon. I'm a resident of Northkirk. I've been there 36 years at 22 Jenkin Street, which is on the west side of the proposed development. The changes that have been put forward for the proposed development, as far as I'm concerned, at 22 Jenkin Street, are minimal. The vast bulk of this building is still taking up the entire block. I've made the analogy before that I'm like a cruiser, an aircraft carrier has pulled up next door to me, completely overwhelming me. I feel like I'm about to be given a broadside. But nonetheless, that's what I'm dealing with. And the size of this building, going all the way down most of the back of the block, is facing my backyard. I've kept my garden, as a lot of people in Jenkin Street have. For 30 years I've maintained this garden. No garden next door. The other problem that I have as the resident of 22 is the duplex nature of this construction. This construction is facing east-west. Every other house in the street is facing north-south because that's how it was built. This one is facing east-west, so on my side, the entire building faces my property, faces my lounge room, faces my backyard. It doesn't fit, and it's going to detract from the amenities of the people that live in the street, particularly those people that live next door. All the lights, all the noises from this building.
Sorry, your time is up.
See, I've gone that long.
Yes. Thank you very much, Simon. I was quite riveted, so I think I lost the time. But I'll go to Caterina Stacros. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for this opportunity to address you again. I guess my starting point is, as a planning authority, council decides it's what its strategic framework is, and that provides direction to both developers and to existing property owners. I'm at number 25 Jenkin Street, directly opposite the review site. The planning scheme, as I understand it, provides that this is a minimum change area. It has a preferred Edwardian and Victorian character. Clause 02 and 15 of the planning scheme show us that in the strategic planning framework plan and in the neighbourhood character policy. It's one of very few, it's a handful of minimum change areas across the city of Darabin. The balance of the sites, the residential sites across the municipality, are in an incremental change area or in a substantial change area. That's where development of hodgepodge type of modern character belongs. It doesn't belong in an area where council has said its preferred character is the retention of its Edwardian and Victorian style. Council introduced Amendment C199 to the Darabin Planning Scheme as recently as January 2024, and it was a policy-neutral translation of its policy content and its intent. Why? Because the streetscape is consistent in its built form, in its architectural style, in its neighbourhood character. The proposal, whilst tweaked, provides an overbearing bulky presence, and it bears no relationship to the streetscape or the neighbourhood. In short, it shows no respect at all of the existing architectural styles from the streetscape. So therefore, given what council's policy is, given that this policy has been put into the planning scheme as recently as January 2024 in its revised policy content, its translation from old format planning scheme to new format planning scheme, council opted to keep its same policy. It had an opportunity to change it if council was that way inclined. So that's the policy we're working within, and that's the policy that I'm asking that council adheres to and respects and shows us as residents and as developers that it takes its own policy seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Caterina. And we'll go to Cecilia, who I believe is online. Cecilia, would you like to turn on your camera?
I'm going, can you hear me? I'm going to try to do. Sorry, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Cecilia. And look, we'll see how we go, but if we don't get video, that's fine. We can just go with audio. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, I'm going to try start my video, see if that works. Ooh, here we go.
We can see now. Please go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. My main objection to this proposal is the overall bulk of the development and its impact on the neighbouring properties, especially the overshadowing. I'm not directly affected. I'm at number 18 Jenkin Street. But if this was a proposal next to my house, the impact of the overshadowing in particular on our solar panels would be very detrimental. We have 17 solar panels and a battery in order to try and reduce our carbon footprint and also manage our energy costs, and both of those are important to us. If this development had occurred right next to our house, 11 of those 17 solar panels will be very heavily affected in terms of output. So looking at the revised plans, they do not meaningfully change the bulk, and therefore they're overshadowing on the development. Again, it doesn't directly impact my property, but I'm concerned that this would set a precedent to the entire street and impact anyone who has solar now or would like to invest it in the future. Because what's the point if in about two years' time, you have a big house next door that's just going to be overshadowing it? That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cecilia, and thank you everyone for joining us to make your submissions. Councillors, have we got any questions on this item? Counsel Lawrence.
Just through the officers, can I just have an explanation of the actual residential zone we are dealing with?
Thank you for the question, councillor. Through you, Mayor, the subject site is Zone Neighbourhood, Residential Zone 1. It's in the minimal housing change framework area. It's not affected by any overlays of note, with the exception of the Development Contributions Plan overlay. Thank you.
Any further questions? No. Okay. Do we have a motion? Counsel Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. I've circulated a motion which is very simple, and it reads simply that council not support planning permit application D5992022 as amended at the upcoming VCAT hearing. It's a continuation of our existing position, in fact.
Thank you. Counsel Lawrence, would you like to second? Thank you. Counsel Rennie, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm continuing to have doubts as to whether the tinkering that's been done.
Sorry, Counsel Rennie, I've just got Counsel Greco with his hand up. Did you have something?
Oh, I just had a question, just in relation to the motion that's been put.
Okay, I did give an opportunity for questions, but I will allow it, Counsel Greco. So Counsel Rennie, if you could just pause your debate, we'll go back to it in a minute. Counsel Greco, please ask your question.
Yeah, through you as the chair to our officers, I just want to understand that the motion that's been put for refusal, whether that's adequate enough for our officers to work with or to submit and work with in relation to the VCAT hearing.
Thank you.
Or whether the motion needs to be further articulated in some way.
Thank you. I'll go to Chair.
Thank you, councillors. Through the mayor, that motion is essentially the continuation of council's existing position, and council will continue to argue on the grounds on which the original decision was made. So no, that is more than adequate.
Thank you. I'll go.
If I may, Mayor, just as a clarification. If I may, Mayor, just as a clarification, satisfied with the answer because I wanted to ensure that the motion was robust enough that it could be pursued by our officers at VCAT. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Greco. I'll go back to Councillor Rennie as mover.
Thank you, Mayor. In August last year, this council rejected a planning permit application for this site because the proposal was inconsistent with neighbourhood character. It is true that the developer has made some amendments, but nothing in these amendments fundamentally changes the housing typology and the general appearance, and therefore I believe it is still inconsistent with neighbourhood character, and this is something that we need to have VCAT test. This is a street that in any other circumstance and in many other municipalities would probably have a heritage overlay. Unfortunately, through past decisions of past planning ministers, Darabin Council has missed out on a lot of the sort of heritage protections that we see in other municipalities. The neighbourhood character test is the one thing that we do have in a minimal change area, and I think it's incumbent upon us to test it fully at VCAT. I also think it's worth noting that there are particularly engaged group of residents who are extremely committed to maintaining the neighbourhood character of their street and who for decades have invested in doing just that, in making sure that their improvements, renovations, all the work they've done on their properties respects the very unique neighbourhood character in this street. And for anyone who's not familiar with it, I really encourage you walk down Jenkin Street between, on the western end of the street. The other thing that's impressed me tonight is that we've had many people come and speak to many planning applications, and that residents and applicants alike on the previous applications we've heard from have brought goodwill to the process and have understood that this is a legitimate civic process for residents to be able to engage in. We've heard from residents, and I've seen firsthand, that in this case, the developer has not brought goodwill to the exercise by putting up fairly unpleasant and vindictive signs, which seem to have been intended to undermine the sale of residential properties. And I think it's important for everybody to note that participating in this type of democratic and civic process is a fundamental right and is a very good thing for our community to do. Because regardless of the outcome that people get when they walk out of here, it can be inherently community building, and the residents who left here before are probably not happy with council's decision. But they have got together as a community and engaged in good faith as a community. And I think that this is a really fundamental thing, and I hope that all applicants and residents understand this civic process and participate with goodwill, and I hope that VCAT sees the same neighbourhood character that we do in Jenkin Street and sees fit to protect it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Councillor Lawrence? And just before you speak, there's no audience question, sorry. Councillor Lawrence, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Newton, and Chair of this planning committee. Yes, I'm very happy to support this. I think at the risk of repeating something that happened five years ago, which apparently you can't even have on your CV anymore, we requested from the state government thirty-eight per cent protection of various prized residential zonings when the whole state got rezoned a number of governments ago. At the last minute, our application was turned upside down and we only received thirteen per cent of these preferred neighbourhood number one characteristics that you will find dominate Glen Iris, Camberwell Side Streets. We accepted higher heights along our transit corridors in the same process, and this betrayal is still here. So fundamentally, if we cannot protect our neighbour residential zone ones for built form, for garden character, for frontage, we're not doing our job. That's a very small slither of proper protection. Now, I am very pro-housing. I don't mind cutting this block in two, do it tomorrow. But this vulgar picture, this vulgar architecture has no respect for the surrounding neighbourhood.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. Have we got further speakers to the item? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate that some changes have been made by the applicant in relation to the setback tree coverage and overshadowing. I wanted to acknowledge that these are generally consistent with the Darabin Design Guide, and through this process, whatever turns out, there is an improved application. And again, I appreciate the efforts by the applicant and by council staff in particular to get us to this point. However, I'll be supporting this motion because I agree with the points that Councillor Rennie and Councillor Lawrence have made, and I really appreciate all the points the objectives have made, that the changes are, they're minor rather than major, and the visual impression from the street is still largely the same. So what it really comes down to is an issue with the consistency with neighbourhood character. This is to some degree subjective. I'm not an expert in the area, there are experts who've given advice on this, but it is a case-by-case assessment, application by application, street by street. In this case, we've got Jenkin Street, as we've heard, it's largely intact with Victorian or Edwardian houses. It's a lovely street, it's a beautiful street, and the residents take a lot of pride in that street, and it's a great community. So I think it's worth keeping with the position from last time this came to the planning committee and carrying through and testing at VCAT whether the application is in fact consistent with the minimal change as per the planning zone. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we got any further speakers to this item? No. Oh, sorry, Councillor Greco, go ahead.
Look, thank you. I just want to make a couple of points in relation to this application, and I'm speaking in favour of the refusal. I remember when this application came to our council, and the two items that I focused in on was the visual bulk and obviously the neighbourhood character. Look, I appreciate as previous councillors have said, that the applicant has made some headway in terms of addressing some of the other issues that needed to be addressed as part of our rejection of the original application when it came to council. But the key issues really have always been the visual bulk and the neighbourhood character. I believe that council owes it to the residents and just generally to our community to follow through with their original decision to reject the application primarily on those two grounds. And as other councillors have also said, that that therefore needs to be something that rightly gets tested at the, at VCAT with the support of council advocating with the community in relation to ensuring that neighbourhood character and visual bulk are issues that are addressed. So on that basis, I'm happy to support the motion that's before us, that is not to support the application at VCAT. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Greco. I will close off the debate by also supporting the motion that's been put forward. So, planning is a, it's a big topic for us, especially at the moment. The state government is wanting to have eight hundred thousand new homes built in Victoria over the next ten years. We will get some of that in High Street Preston, particularly around here. We are expecting something like fifteen thousand new residents here in the next few years when that happens. We've also got a situation where a lot of planning controls and a lot of community consultation is going to be taken out of our hands and put in the state government's hands. I'm pretty worried about that, but I think I welcome development in many ways if it's livable, if we have social and affordable housing as well. But what we have here is exactly the reason why communities should have their say at local level, because we have a street that is incredibly united on this decision. We've seen you last August, we've seen you again today, and we know how important the neighbourhood character is to you. We have places like Jenkin Street, so then we can also have places like High Street Preston where more development can happen, so we can have all sorts of development in our city. So for me, I absolutely acknowledge that the developer has worked with council and with community since August, but I think, I'm going to say this very clearly, I think it's very much undermined by the signs that were put out the front of the potential development. So for me, even if I was thinking about potentially going a different way, the signs were a very clear signal that I don't know that this developer is working in the best way that they could with neighbours. So I will close the debate there. So we have a motion on the table, all those in favour. That is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Just bear with me, I'm just figuring out what I have to say next. So we will go on to item six, general planning information, 6.1, scheduled VCAT application. So I have a mover of the motion, councillor Rennie, I'll have a second there. Councillor Greco, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. And consideration reports considered confidential, there are none. Close of meeting. Councillors, as there is in our other business to consider this evening, I would like to declare the planning committee closed at 9:04pm. Thank you and good night to our viewers, members of the public in attendance, councillors and officers, and are now